Ever wonder what everyone's doing on their phones? They're banking with Bank of America. They're saving, planning, and budgeting all before dessert.
Digital tools so impressive, you just can't stop banking. What would you like the power to do?
Welcome to this highly anticipated session, Detroit's Last Word with members of Detroit City Council. I'm Lloyd Jackson, co-host of the JR Morning Show on AM 760 WJR, and I have the honor of moderating what promises to be an engaging and impactful discussion. And today we're joined by five esteemed members of the Detroit City Council who will provide their insights into issues that matter most to Detroiters as we look beyond 2025 and beyond. The panel will not only address the pressing challenges our city faces, but also spotlight the opportunities that lie ahead for growth, development, and progress. And let me introduce our panelists. We have with us the President of the Detroit City Council, Representative of District Five, Mary Sheffield. Also, James Tate, President Pro Tem and Representative of District One. Scott Benson, Representative of District Three, Councilperson. Councilmember Fred Duhall III, Representative of District Seven. And Councilmember Coleman Young, the second member at large. All right, so this first question is for everybody, okay? So Detroit right now is at a critical juncture as we approach the beginning of 2025 as we continue through the year with opportunities for growth and challenges that demand bold solutions. Now, to start, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing Detroit right now? What role do you see the council playing in addressing it?
All right, well, I guess I'll start in good evening to everyone and thank you all for staying with us. I know it's been a long day, so thank you for rocking with the city council as we end out the Detroit Regional Policy Conference. I also wanted to recognize one of our colleagues that is here with us, Councilmember Waters, who is not on the stage, but wanted to recognize her as well. So, wow, a lot of issues that I'm passionate about. I think that a lot of the barriers that still exist around poverty, around Detroiters making more of a living wage, of growing our population, and more importantly, how we retain Detroiters here in the city of Detroit. One of the things for me that I'm really trying to work on is how we cultivate and foster an environment that not only people want to work and play, but actually live here in the great city of Detroit. In District Five, we have been privileged with having a huge amount of investment and development that is taking place in District Five. The Future of Health, which is a $3 billion project, along with the Pistons and their new development. We also have the Fisher Body Plan and tons of development that is happening, but also making sure that Detroiters are prepared from a workforce investment standpoint for these jobs of today and of tomorrow, I think is important. But really growing our population, addressing the issue of poverty in the city of Detroit is important to me. And then lastly, I've spent a lot of time recently with business, and what I'm hearing is that we have a lot to do around the culture of how we do business in Detroit, creating more of a business-friendly environment, removing some of the barriers to entry, the bureaucracy of navigating city government, because we lose a lot of business to other cities because the way in which and the amount of time that it takes to get business done in Detroit. And so fostering an environment, an ecosystem of support for small businesses, I think, is instrumental and key as we continue to grow Detroit to make sure that we're creating a city that's thriving for all.
Councilman Tate?
Thank you. Good, good late afternoon, everybody. I also want to give a shout out to our colleague. She saw her coming to the room. Y'all give it up for Member Santiago Romero, District Six. Yes. So for me, one of the main issues, and we've been working on it now, and we have to continue to do so in overdrive, is affordable, accessible, and attainable housing. We know that it has become one of the most challenging things for residents, families to find, and that's affordable housing. When you look at the rents, and here we are in the city of Detroit talking about rents, when we at one point in time had the highest homeowner rate in the entire country. And now we're relegated to talking about renting. And I'm not saying anything bad about those who rent. You got to rent for various reasons. People don't want to own a home. They've been there, done that. But what we have to do is identify ways for us to be able to create affordable, attainable, accessible housing for residents in the city of Detroit. And what we find is even when we have the threshold that is called affordable now by the federal levels, there's still Detroiters that are priced out because our incomes have not reached the point where it is in the same area in the realm of those municipalities that we're grouped into from a federal level. So my laser beam focus for the upcoming year and beyond is to do whatever I can to assist with creating affordable, attainable, accessible housing for Detroiters.
Councilman Benson?
This is fantastic. It's great to see city council here solving all the problems of the city and would be the state of Michigan in one session. For me, I'm going to continue really focus on wealth generation, attracting and supporting young families, moving people out of poverty into the middle class, retaining our existing middle class, and then making Detroit a space where middle-class families and wealthy families want to come back to the city of Detroit. In addition, keeping with the theme of the policy conference is also job creation by supporting small businesses. And so if you talk about what we've been doing in the third district, we have something called the Wealth Generation Task Force. And where's my team? Don't be shy. There we go. There's my staff there. And so we have six pillars and a report, and please go to my city webpage. The report is there, the Wealth Generation Task Force. We're advocating for how do we put families into the middle class and how do we keep our black middle class as well? And so we have six pillars, including homeownership, which also means how do we protect our wealth and grow our generational wealth? And since so many of our residents keep their wealth in their homes, how do we make sure that people are able to transfer that wealth between generations efficiently? Because so many of us may live in Big Mama's House, maybe we don't have the deed, we're paying the taxes, but we can't take advantage of any of the programs or we can't transfer that wealth onto our future generations. And even if you don't want to give a home to your kids or to your cousins or your nieces or nephews, you may want to give that home and that wealth to your church or to some other needy institution. And if you don't have proper ownership, i.e. via will, i.e. via power of attorney, or via estate planning, we have to continue to do that. And we have a city program that does that, so please get your will and estate planning. In addition, when it comes to supporting young families, we have to make sure that people want to grow and prosper right here in the city of Detroit, and that's a challenge for us. And so when it comes to education, and obviously we can't play in that space, and we've got our school board member right here, but what we can do is support early childhood education, so that's zero to three. And right now, you've got the governor with PPK for All. How do we impact early childhood education? And it is so expensive. We also have to ensure that we have an ecosystem here in the city of Detroit that supports our early childhood educators, and that means they have to have a living wage. In addition, we have to make sure that we're supporting small businesses via reducing any type of bureaucracy, ensuring that the permitting process is friendly, that people know, and they do, and the city's working hard on this, that Detroit is open for business and we speak the language of business.
Councilman Fred Duhall, you're not announcing that you're going to run for mayor today, are you? Are you going to make that announcement this afternoon? Okay, okay, same question for you.
Just had to make sure this. But first, good evening to everyone. It's just an honor always to be here. No, I'm not going to announce that today. But to a lot of my wonderful colleagues' points, I think what you're hearing, the biggest issue that we're facing is investment in our residents, investment in our business, and investment in our city. And the question becomes how we do that on the side of government. So when we talk about small business incubators, when we talk about pushing for a small business, which we've done a decent job here at the city of Detroit over the past few years, we don't talk about how we provide support systems. Motor City Match has been amazing, helping a lot of small businesses get a start, get off of their feet. But when you talk to small business owners, one of the main things that they talk about are where are the support services to ensure that my business stays open? If we're doing a good job of producing entrepreneurs in small business, we've also got to do a better job investing in them to ensure their businesses stay open, because those are things that connect to our neighborhoods. As we look at the future here in the city of Detroit, one of the biggest issues that we're going to have to deal with is walkable neighborhoods, our communities, creating commercial corridors that thrive here in the city of Detroit because they foster and they support small businesses, they help grow property values here in the city of Detroit. And let's just be frank, small businesses hire local residents. That leads to generational wealth for the owners of those small businesses. That leads to stability so folks can pay their rent, whether it's affordable or not. But it also leads just to a better city where we also see public safety numbers get better. There is no, I would say, there is no one that will not agree we've come far when it relates to public safety. We've got some of the lowest homicide rates in over 30 years. Fatal and non-fatal shootings are down, but we still have to work to connect the dot and ensure that this city is welcoming to everyone, that it is safe for everyone, and we're doing everything we can to invest in our residents, our small businesses, and big business to ensure that we can continue to generate revenue here in the city.
Councilman Young?
Lloyd Jackson, always good to see you. You're cool to the other side of the pillow, man. Always good to see you, my guy. Always good to see you, my guy. Listen, I think some of the biggest things that we're dealing with now, first and foremost, is more affordable housing. I think it's more accessible housing. I think that, you know, if the pandemic showed us anything, is that housing is very important, and a lot of people are struggling out there. And so I think that's the first thing that we need to do. You know, I know that I'm proud of trying to promote not only just merging, you know, having more housing, so supporting payment in lieu of taxes, supporting tiny houses, supporting modular houses, but also 3D printing. I think trying to be on the 21st century, the cups of trying to build more houses for people who need them, not just for people who want to come to the city of Detroit, but for people who stayed. And I think that's something that's very important. I think the second thing we need to deal with is taxes. I think everybody here in the city of Detroit can admit taxes are too damn high. And so, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but there is this thing called the land value tax that I support, 17% property tax cut for 97% of Detroit homeowners. I think that's a good thing, and I think that's something that we should do, not only because it's going to help Detroiters, homeowners, but also businesses. And I think we need to reduce the steps required for small businesses in the city of Detroit. I think there's too many of them. And so I think we need to look to see what they've done across the country in terms of having a smaller amount of businesses, because I think we need to create over 60% of new businesses. They need to create three jobs per small business for us to achieve full employment in the city of Detroit, and I think that's something that's valuable, even though we've had the lowest unemployment rate in the city of Detroit like 30 years or 35 years, something of that nature. I think it's critical. It's the lifeblood of every single city is putting people to work. And we've had, I just want to thank everybody in this room because you embody that. Not only do you embody small business, but you embody opportunities that people wouldn't have without you. I can't tell you when I go and knock on doors about the young man that went to me and said, "I went to job, to job, to job, and job, and got turned down, and I got a job because I went to a small business and the guy hired me." No one would give me a second looksee, but I went to this local restaurant, or I went to this local grocery store, and I got a job. That's what you represent here. So if you don't hear anything else from me and what I have to say, I'm appreciative of you and what you've done and your investment in the city of Detroit, and it makes my job so much easier tenfold. And so I think these are the things that we need to work on, and we also need to make sure that we have efficient transit in the city of Detroit, especially now in the cold. You know, I think it's good that we've increased the pullout rate to over 90%, but the fact that we have buses that are not showing up on time and pick up people up, we need to pick them up. And, you know, unfortunately, we've had some instances in the past where people have frozen to death walking from certain places. So this is a life or death issue. I think, you know, investing more, and I want to thank President Sheffield and my council and my colleagues for investing more in preventive maintenance so that the buses can actually be fixed and show up on time. And so, you know, the biggest room in the world is a room for improvement, but we have some exposure there. But I definitely think if we could do these things, we'll have a better and thriving city.
All right. So now you guys, you see that clock over there? We got 30 minutes.
Oh, no, okay. I got to, I saw you, I got too excited, man. I couldn't help myself.
I'm going to ask him some individual questions now. We're going to run through this, and we're going to make it for 30, we're going to make it for 30 minutes. All right? Okay, all right. So Councilman Tate, I want to ask you about public safety. And, you know, crime numbers are down. A lot of that due to the community and the Shot Stopper Program, where you have a lot of these community activists out here in the streets, walking the streets, making, you know, diffusing things before they happen. Is that something that can continue to be funded and continue to help bring those numbers down in the city?
So not just can it be, it has to be funded. And as long as I'm on the council, we're going to push to get that funding continued. Of course, we've got to work on state funding as well and funds from the federal government, so it's not just us. And that's the one thing that we always have to keep in mind. We are a part of this puzzle, so to speak, the city of Detroit government. But when we start talking about the reduction, this 30-plus year or at least 30-year reduction in crime in the city of Detroit, that is a result of everyone pulling together. We've seen how the law enforcement agencies, they pull together with, is it One Detroit or Detroit One? I know they, One Detroit, it was Detroit One. We saw how they all came together. But more importantly, and I always want to give a shout out to the Detroit Police Department as well. Y'all give it up for our Detroit Police Department. They are under manned, but they are dedicated and committed to our citizens on a daily basis. But we also look at those folks who go out, the general population, but those individuals who've been doing this work for so long with no pay, no guarantee that tomorrow they'll be able to do this work, and they've been in the community, and they didn't have a name, now we're calling them shot stoppers, but technically they're community violence interrupters, right? And we've got to make sure that the dollars that we have in the city of Detroit were able to utilize a portion of that to continue to fund them. I have been championing this for quite some time, even before we did it. And I'm glad we finally got across the threshold. Forest Detroit, and I think I saw Zo back there in the back. Forest, there he is, that's a good brother. Forest Detroit was the first organization that brought this to us, and the former, the founder and leader of Forest Detroit, Aleah Quinn, Harvey Quinn, she's the first one who implanted that in my brain. And I continue to push that and push that and push that with the administration, and then we had new colleagues come on board, we had even more so. And Madam President has always been a part of this effort as well. So long answer to your short question is yes, we have to make sure and ensure that we fund our CVI initiatives to continue to drive those crime numbers down, but also hold us as city government accountable as well. We can't let our foot off the gas just because we have folks who are out in the community that are doing a young man's job and doing it in the way that he have not been able to do in the past. But yes, continue to fund CVI programs.
Sure, go ahead, yeah. Just to intervene as well, good plug. We know that the Public Safety Trust Fund did not pass in the last state house legislature. And so this is a good opportunity for us to advocate and to push for that funding that will come back to the city of Detroit. A portion of it will go to permanently fund the CVI work that is needed, and also a portion will go to DPD. I do have an ordinance that is drafted that will cement the work of the CVI groups and create an additional and permanent stream of funding for their work to continue. So just want to put that out there that we need our state leaders in Lansing to move on that this year. If we have any influence in the room, let's make sure we make those calls and advocate for the passage of the Public Safety Trust Fund.
And if I may, just really quickly, as we all co-chair the Gun Violence Task Force, when we talk to our CVI groups, which by the way have driven numbers down in these areas significantly, one of the main things that we need here in the city of Detroit is an Office of Violence Prevention. I know Member Santiago Romero has been pushing for this. I know that many of our CVI groups that we speak to say we need an Office of Violence Prevention because we've got to look at the social determinants of health. We've got to look at the systemic issues that drive gun violence that lead to public safety and look at it holistically. We've got to talk about mental health, and we've got to have a place where folks can go and get these issues addressed. And so we'll be looking to push Office of Violence Prevention in this year, something that is sustainable to keep CVI as well as other programs going.
I know it's a collaboration, it's a state and a city collaboration, but what I'd like to know is when you bring in young people, keeping young people here in the city, young people going to school, going to college, but a lot of times they leave and they go other places. We need a lot of that talent here in the city of Detroit. How do we keep that talent here? What can you guys do to help keep that talent here in the city of Detroit? Scott Benson?
All right, thank you. And Lloyd, thank you for doing this today as well and hosting us, as well as the regional chamber here. And so one of the things that you all do is the regional chamber, I should say, is the promise for college education, that making sure that people stay here and get educated and get educated for free is part of it, but also in the city of Detroit, how do we make us a competitive city? And so when we talk about location selection theory, why do people stay in the city of Detroit? Why do they want to be here? We need to have a space where people want to have an education, where the people feel they can get a quality education, where families feel they are safe, where we have the services that are needed in the city of Detroit. And as many people know, if you do an exit interview with people who are leaving the city, oftentimes they don't feel that way. So when we have young people say, "Well, I want to go, I don't have to own a car," how is our public transit system doing? Is it competitive with the Chicago or the New York? If the answer is no, what do we have to do? And we have advocates here today like True, who are looking and seeking and advocating for better public transit. When we have school board members who want to make sure that we can provide a quality education to our residents, when we have people like Zo and our colleagues who are supporting CVI, when we talk about reducing the crime, that's how we keep people in the city of Detroit, make it competitive. When we have a space where people can go play, like our downtown, and we got a great story and people like hanging out downtown, are we competitive if you go to a Kansas City, if you go to a DC? Do you, can you do the things here that they can do there, or can you do more here in the city of Detroit than they can do there? And then do we have affordable housing? And if you go to any other major city, our housing stock is affordable. You can find a quality home in the city of Detroit for sub $250,000. Now, I want you to go to Los Angeles and try to find a home, quality home, for sub $250,000, or go to DC, try to find a quality home for sub $250,000, and people will say, "Well, that's out of the reach of many of our residents." Is it? If you're looking at what it takes to own that type of home, we have the jobs that are available here in the city of Detroit. We have the banks that can lend you the money, and you can do a mortgage reasonably sub $250,000 in the city of Detroit. And if we can't do that for families and young people, then we need to be identifying jobs that will pay them enough to provide them to pay for quality, affordable housing, and a quality of life that they can get here that they can't get anywhere else. That's how we do that. We become the most competitive city out of everybody because that's what we're competing for, young people to come here, have fun, have a good time, start their families, and stay here, not start their families and move out to the suburbs. And don't hold your head for those of you who have done that, but we need to make sure that we are attracting, retaining, and moving our families into the middle class, just like the Wealth Generation Task Force report says. And if you haven't read that report, go to my webpage, you can download it and see the Wealth Generation Task Force report and the six pillars of how we improve the quality of life and keep people right here in the city of Detroit.
Councilman Duhall, the draft was huge for the city of Detroit, put us on a national stage. We've been in, we've got like the best waterfront in the world. People talk about the waterfront. We have the area campus marshes that really brings people together. How do we sustain those things? And I'm saying that as we have come from bankruptcy to where we are now. You know, before, we had all those nice things. Now, but before, you couldn't get nothing but a wig and a pair of shoes downtown. So I'm just trying to say, how do we sustain that and keep that going? Because that's very important. We've come a long way since bankruptcy.
So I definitely bought a pair of shoes, not a wig, but, you know, what I would say is that involves strengthening our public-private partnerships. I'd be remiss if I didn't state that one of the reasons that the city of Detroit has grown exponentially is the strength in our public-private partnerships. When we talk about the DDP, when we talk about Visit Detroit, when we talk about all of these other groups that have helped create a plan of how we push and have that vibrant downtown, those partnerships have been there every step of the way. It is true, we still have to focus on remaining fiscally stable. I don't want anyone in this room to leave here today and think that Detroit is at the pinnacle that it is supposed to be. We have emerged from the largest municipal bankruptcy in U.S. history, and we did that though, really coming out and making some tough decisions for retirees. We made some tough decisions relative to our pensioners, our police, our fire, and our EMS. And so we've got to find a way to pour back into them so they can frequent downtown and we can continue to generate a tax base. But the reason, or the way, excuse me, how we keep this going, we sit down and have those tough conversations. Yes, I love our riverfront, but if you visit Chicago and you look at the possibility of what our riverfront can become, we've got a long way to go. You look at a Navy Pier, you look at some of these other areas. Member Benson mentioned it. We talk about transit. We've got to generate this revenue. We got to keep this revenue here, down here, so, and keep it going. When we look at our budget right now, we've had the pleasure over the last few years of enjoying $827 million of ARPA funding that we were able to put into other programs. We were able to put into infrastructure. We were able to put in public safety. Well, all that money is programmed. All that money is not coming back. So we're going back to a status quo budget. We're looking at our general fund now, and us as council members within the next few months are going to have to make those tough decisions and say, what do we invest in going forward? What do we invest in as far as our infrastructure? But how do we create more tools for Detroit to become more vibrant? I make no apologies that I am very supportive and have been very supportive of development as well as tax incentives that help us here. We are competing with cities in our region. You look at a city like Columbus, by the way, nothing good comes from Ohio, by the way. But you look at a city like Columbus, when you look at how they grow, they invested $2 billion in tax incentives for Intel to come there and create those jobs, because they said, "We want to be able to have the money, have those jobs, generate that revenue, put folks back to work, and we are going to make the investment to do so." We've got to be careful with tax incentives and understand how they affect our economy. But we are not at the point right now where we can start, you know, where we can say that we need to stop building. We've got to keep the train moving.
Councilman Young, you're a member at large, so you have the citywide perspective. What do you believe are the key drivers of Detroit's economic outlook? And what actions do you think the council needs to take to ensure some long-term growth in job creation?
Well, first of all, I think Fred kind of hit on the head. We talked about we want to make sure that we have more public-private partnerships. We want to keep those partnerships going. We want to have more incentives. I think that's something that's absolutely important. But I also think that we want to make sure that we have a trained workforce, that we have the skill sets that we need, that we work with our union and our labor. You know, we want to, one, make sure that we have the best university, which we do with Wayne State. We want to keep that partnership going, you know, as well as the partnership we have with University of Detroit Mercy and other universities around where we're at, Wayne County Community College. But we also want to make sure that we work with labor as well for people who may not go to college, who want to learn those skilled trades, to be able to have that. So we have the best workforce development. We have the best brain trust available. I think that's something that we need to do in terms of investing in that. I also think, like I said earlier though, we need to look at seeing how we can reduce certain regulations and barriers of entry that are harder for businesses to get started, whether they're smaller businesses or whether we're talking about, and we got to be careful when we talk about tax incentives, or whether you're talking about tax incentives as well. I mean, listen, I think even though, I think 2022, well, not 2022, but let me say, I think a while ago, we had about the majority of taxes that are in the downtown, midtown area. If you look at 2023, 57% of the tax incentives were outside the downtown area, according to Citizens Research Council in the city of Detroit. I think these are things that we need to keep going. We need to start promoting that. We need to start promoting more NEZs. We need to start making sure that we promote more payment in lieu of taxes so we can have more affordable housing and buildings and things of that nature. We need to reduce the barriers of entry for small businesses to be able to start up. But I think we also need to make sure that we understand that we have a very business-friendly climate when it comes to major investment. I think the community benefits agreements are important so that we have Detroiters that are trained for jobs and opportunities when they come in the construction trades. I also think that we need to start preparing more for artificial intelligence as well. I think it's, you know, even though in metro Detroit, it's about 7.7 jobs per 100,000 people, so it hasn't hit us the same way that it's hit Silicon Valley, we still need to prepare for this. I think McKinley put out, well, Kinsey put out a report saying that 10% of all global jobs be replaced by 2030. You know, I know that's kind of stark. You know, I know that's kind of stark, but I think it's important that we train for this and that the kids, and, and, and I'm proud to be able to introduce the Transportation Innovation Zone, which basically was providing a permitting process for businesses that are in the innovation mobility space to be able to get their permits together to start small businesses. So one, that be able to help them, but two, I think Google has a actual program where you could get a certificate in three to five months. And so, and I want to thank everybody in this room for what happened with this, with the Central Train Station. I think that's absolutely phenomenal, and those are the things we need to do. I, I know I'm taking up my five-minute rule, but I just want to make sure I got that out.
Oh, okay, okay. Council President Sheffield, first of all, let me just say, I just want to thank you for, for bringing the decorum back to city council. I covered city council for years, and it wasn't always like that, it was a lot of fighting, a lot of bickering and stuff, and when I cover it now, when I see it now, it's, it's, it's smooth, it's smooth. You guys really respect each other, for the most, okay, for the most part, it is, but I want to, I want to, I want to say, I appreciate that, I want to, I appreciate that. I want to ask you about the solar neighborhoods, the solar fields. There have been some that have been approved, so that's the best way to use these neighborhoods, to redo these neighborhoods, is to put the solar in those neighborhoods?
I think it's, it's an, it's an opportunity, right, to utilize land that is, in other ways vacant and blighted. At first, I was not a huge supporter of the solar initiative, but I did have the opportunity to go out physically and door knocking, canvass some of the areas that it was proposed to be in, and to hear directly from those residents that, hey, they're tired of looking outside of vacant homes, they feel like they've been left out, they want something in investment in their community. To me, it was a way for me to, to bring some productive use into that area. So I think it's a way to utilize and bring solar to communities that oftentimes have not been invested in, and then also to help us become more green here in the city of Detroit. And so I think it's one option, I think the most important thing though is that the community needs to be involved in that decision-making process. And if the community is open to having that in their area as we're developing and figuring out how to utilize vacant land, then that's the main point for me, is making sure that community has a voice throughout that process.
And, and Councilman Tate, what about the area of 375 that they want to redo over through Black Bottom? How, how much, how involved will you guys be in making sure that we get some, some play out of that?
Yeah, so, so, so part of it is, is us making sure that we have in conversation with the community and not trying to have the decision for them.
That's right.
When I say we, I'm saying city council even from that micro level.
Yes.
But, but if I, if I can go back to the solar piece.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, touch it, touch it.
So I, I, I like the idea, I think it's a great concept. My challenge is utilizing land that while right now was vacant and utilizing that land for a worthy service, but it takes away the opportunity and the possibility for us to rebuild on that particular land in a neighborhood when there's other possibilities that are out there for this type of infrastructure, whether we talk about small, light industrial areas or, or on the rooftops of some of these buildings. That's a conversation that I think that we have to have, that I don't believe that we truly had. It was a move to remove blight in a neighborhood by utilizing these solar fields, if you will, and the residents are going to be able to benefit $5,000 or so dollars worth of energy-efficient devices. And I think again, that's worthy, because to be honest with you, I don't have $5,000 to provide all those folks, but I also don't have more land to develop either, or to create. That land that is now vacant, that land, if, 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 if we are more, if we think more strongly and intently about it, there's other possibilities, and it may not be right now, but we have an opportunity as we move forward. But if that land is now acquired for those solar farms, solar fields, that's pretty much what it's going to be for the long term. And so in District One, I've listened to the residents, and I think that's important as well, so let me just say this, listening to the residents is very key, and Madam President said that, it's very key. Our community overwhelmingly have said that's not necessarily what we want to do. Now, the folks who live in that particular area, they say, yeah, this is what I want, but I want it because you guys aren't doing anything else for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So now if you provide folks with alternatives, now you give them options, but if you're only providing this as the only option, yeah, I'm going to raise my hand and say, do something, do something for me. And we still have not come up with, even in those areas where we're saying we're going to place those solar farms, we still have not really done any real redevelopment in the neighborhood itself proper. And so that's my challenge with it, I'm not opposed to the concept and the idea, I just believe that we have to explore all options before we say that is the ultimate solution for this, this land that we won't get back again in that capacity for homes, single-family dwellings, or any other type of housing.
All right, we got about eight minutes left, and so I'm going to close this out with a question, and you all can answer it, we can go down the line. So as, as we close, I, I like to ask each of you, for one bold idea or initiative you like to see implemented in Detroit this year that you believe will make the biggest difference for the city and its residents?
Lloyd Jasky getting the pay raise.
Wow!
Lloyd Jasky getting the pay raise.
So I, I am very focused on property tax reform, structural property tax reform. There's no surprise that I've been a huge advocate of the entertainment tax in light of all of the economic activity that's taking place downtown with all of our sports teams. I don't believe that the city is benefiting financially as much as we could from the economic activity that's taking place in downtown Detroit. And so I would like to see as a part of structural property tax reform, some type of local sales option tax, primarily it would be an entertainment tax on ticketed entertainment venues, it would be like a surcharge that ticket goers would actually pay no more than $2 to $3. That money would then become revenue to the city where we can offset and reduce millage rates for both businesses and residents. And so that will be a part of overall property tax reform. It's not just being proposed as a tax, but as structural reform that would allow us to reduce our millage, which we've already heard is extremely high, we pay two, our millage rate is the highest in the state, so it will allow us to provide relief for both businesses and residents. It's something I truly believe in, I've had several conversations with business entities in downtown Detroit that are very supportive of it. I mean, most people who come, I know we all frequent a lot of downtown events, but a lot of people come from out of the city and are coming downtown, and so more of this would be a tax, so-called tax to those who are visiting these ticketed venues. So that is something I would like to see, I would push for, or some other type of local sales option tax, whether it be through hotels, et cetera, that can breathe, bring in additional revenue while offsetting a reduction in millage rates.
Councilman Tate?
Yeah, for me, it's, it's not so much of a big idea, it's really identifying how do we continue the programs that we currently have that are funded with those ARPA dollars that are not, no longer going to be within our coffers. We have programs right now that help businesses, that help residents, we, we have programs today that help educate, further upskill and educate folks, provide employment. I believe we have to still do those things, but at what level?
Yeah.
What level can we do them now, at, at this, at this point? And so as we have talked about earlier, we're about to forge into the budget process with the city council and the mayor, and, and for me, that is what's glaringly important right in front of my face. I can think about all those other things, but people have become reliant upon some of these programs that have really truly helped change their life and their trajectory for their families. So the question is, how do we continue to move in that direction without that huge pot of money that we have currently in our, well, had currently in our coffers, and we're now dwindling down to the finish line?
Big initiative for you, Scott Benson?
And so I can't stop at one, I got to do two, and I got to just help, so bear with me real quick. So number one, I want to make sure that we get a, a funding, so dedicated funding source for our museums, and that bill is in Lansing right now, and we're going to be asking Wayne and Oakland Counties to support funding our cultural institutions right here in the city of Detroit, those are regional assets. Number two is, and I've had this conversation with my colleague, the city of Detroit is the only sitting state in Michigan that actually funds substance use prevention with our marijuana revenue. And this is, we do 2%, and that's something that our colleagues supported, and we have programs right here in the city of Detroit, and I'm hoping that at the state level, we've been advocating for this, that we can make 10% of all revenues go statewide to support youth substance use prevention. I'm going to be asking my colleagues here during the budget session that we do the same thing right here in Detroit and show the state how we can do that. It doesn't change anybody's tax rate, what it does is just ensure that we're providing a safety net for our youth right here in the city of Detroit. If we're going to be making revenues in that industry, we need to ensure that we're providing protection for our youth right here in the city of Detroit. So I'm hoping I can get support from my colleagues and from the state for 10% of all marijuana revenues, tax revenues, to go towards substance use prevention for youth.
Scott Benson, everybody negotiating on the stage. Okay. Fred Dearhal, what's your initiative?
Can't say that.
You got four.
We have a quorum present.
But, but what I would say, for me, a bold new idea is find a way to expand our DDA. Right now, the definition of our DDA in our downtown is in the geographical area that it is in, but find a way to expand it out into those commercial corridors, whether that's Grashit, whether that's Michigan Avenue, whether that's further down where we're leading into our downtown. But also work to create a main street in every single neighborhood. Everybody loves the Avenue of Fashion, they go over there off of Livinoy, close to Eight Mile, but every neighborhood should have an avenue of fashion. We should focus and double down on our commercial corridors, expand that, and look at the incentives that can help us do that, whether that's changing definition even on the state level. The second thing, and kind of dovetails into, to what I'm speaking of, is also looking at, and it's maybe not the land value tax, Coleman may say that, either that, or he's going to talk about innovation, I know my brother. What, we, we have to look at how we get these speculators off of the land. So I'm inclined to agree, maybe solar is not the best use, but we also have to look at the options that we have, and in some of those neighborhoods that have been decimated, that relief and just to be able to see something other than grass growing, or houses, or abandoned cars is very important, right? And so it's also important to know that the city, we can terminate that at any time based off of what we voted on. So, but looking at how to get speculators off of land so we can provide more opportunity so that folks who are having a flat surface parking lot and only paying $5,000 in taxes that we're not generating, and we could be generating so much more, how do we get them off of that land and put structures there? How do we build buildings there, brick and mortars that will get folks jobs and continue to generate more tax revenue for our city?
153, Coleman Young, 153.
It's too much pressure, man, I don't like it. Wait till, wait till I get here and say something like that. No, I, I, I have a couple of things too, but I, but I think the major thing that we really need to do, and I said this again, is I think, one, we need to make it easier for businesses to get started here. We need to show that we're serious about our small business and investing in them, like, you know, my colleague said, investing in our corridors. I think secondly, we need to do more, right now, eggs are up by 79% I think in America, gas is up by 22%, food is up by 25% since the pandemic. We need to do more for people who are struggling now to be able to make it. And so I know from my perspective, I think that the guaranteed income is something that's very important. I also think that a local earned income tax credit is something that's definitely needed just like they had in San Francisco. I think these are things that I'm going to be working on diligently, and I also think that it's important that we upgrade our infrastructure with technology, with using artificial intelligence, one, to be able to make sure that we can be able to have, find where the most revenue is and be able to invest in the programs that are so very important in the city of Detroit. Because bottom line is, I think that we're on the right track, we're doing the right things, but we got to make sure that we keep this going, and we got to make sure that the people know that have stayed here, that we're here through the good times, the bad times, hell and high water, that we're going to stick with them and that we're going to invest in them. And like my colleagues say, that we see them, and we understand that times are hard, times are struggling, and you know in this room, I mean, you know how many of you have put your lifesavers into your business? Because during the pandemic, how many people who you know businesses closed during the pandemic? How many you know have borrowed against your house and against everything in your mortgage just to keep your business going? And so we need, oh, okay, okay, I'll wrap it, I'll wrap it, I'll wrap it up. So we need to make sure that we do what we can and make sure that those people understand that we see them, we care about them, and they're going to invest in them and hope that they stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank all of you, all of the city council members, Mary Sheffield, the president of Detroit City Council, representative of District Five, James Tate, president pro temp, and representative of District One, Scott Benson, representative of District Three, Fred Dearhal III, representative of District Seven, and Coleman A. Young, the second member at large. We thank you so much for being part of this session, and we thank you for being here because it's about you as well. It's about you listening and engaging as well. So have a great rest of the evening, drive safely.
Ever wonder what everyone's doing on their phones? They're banking with Bank of America. They're saving, planning, and budgeting all before dessert.
Digital tool so impressive, you just can't stop banking. What would you like the power to do?